Please take your seats. Welcome to the October 17th Special Session of the City Council. We had a closed session prior to meeting this evening, and do we have a closed session report?
Nothing to report out.
Okay. We'll call.
The record will show that all members are present except for Councilman Curry.
Thank you. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance now, and if Councilman Hen doesn't have too much jet lag, we'll ask him to lead us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a quick note before we start our meeting tonight, you'll notice that normally the city attorney's spot is occupied by our city attorney, Robin Claussen. Tonight, we have with us Jim Markham with the law firm of Richards, Watson &amp; Gershon, the firm that the city has hired to represent us with regard to the issues of the moratorium, which we're going to be talking about tonight, and ordinances that may result from or after the moratorium is finished. So with that, I would also like to read a statement before we begin. Please bear with me, it's not that long. Recently, several residents have come to the podium and questioned whether I now or in the past have had or had any financial interest in sober living or group home facilities. Had they taken the time and the courtesy to contact me directly, I would have been happy to address their questions and told them that I have never, at any time, had any financial interest in a sober living or group home. Instead, they chose to spread an unsubstantiated rumor to a wider audience, I believe, in an attempt to discredit and embarrass me publicly. Although I believe that they do this out of a desire to address a problem that they perceive in our community with regard to group homes and sober living facilities, their attacks on me and others in the city government only serve to hurt their cause and the interests of all Newport Beach residents. Our city and this city council has devoted enormous, I repeat, enormous resources to addressing the issues of group homes and sober living facilities in our community. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent. City employees have devoted thousands of hours of staff time. We have now hired our third outside law firm. The city has formed an intense residential occupancy committee to discuss these issues. In March, we hosted a convention of over 300 state and local government participants from Eureka to Chula Vista to share ideas in this area, and there have been numerous planning commission and city council meetings which have occurred at which these issues have been discussed, and I have personally traveled to Sacramento to support a bill introduced on our behalf by State Senator Harmon. As we move forward with our discussion of the extension of the moratorium on new group homes or new group residential uses that are transitory in nature, as we eventually discuss and enact a new ordinance with regard to these same facilities, I want to assure you of the following: We will act thoughtfully, carefully, and deliberately. We will listen to all sides and all approaches. I will do my level best to keep us all, including myself, courteous at all times, even as these discussions get challenging and contentious. I have no doubt that they will, because that is the nature of this issue since day one. To the best of my ability as mayor, we will end up with an ordinance that protects legitimate interests of all Newport Beach's 83,000 residents, and that does not discriminate against any person who is entitled to protection that state and federal law allows. And that is the conclusion of my statement. So with that, I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Kiff for our first and only public hearing of the night, Extension of Temporary Moratorium on Residential Uses That are Transitory in Nature, and a Report of the Measures Taken Since the Adoption of Our Temporary Moratorium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members. I have a PowerPoint presentation I'd like to share with you. It will probably take about 10 minutes, and hopefully this will give some background for the council, the audience, and the folks at home, as well as talk a little bit about the moratorium. So what I'll cover will be a brief background about what's at issue and what's happened to date, as well as the proposed moratorium extension, what's covered within the moratorium and what's not covered, and then some, I'll try to frame some of the key issues for you in the upcoming ordinances, and then offer a timeline from today forward. Feel free to stop and ask questions at any time. On the background, we know that Newport Beach is a popular place to recover. We have 24 different alcohol and drug program licensed treatment facilities, and when I use that ADP term, that means the California Department of Alcohol and Drug Programs. The 24 have 213 licensed beds, and licensed actually for 238 occupants, so occupants include some staff. 14 of the 24 are so-called six and unders, and this is all public information from the ADP website. Now, there are more unlicensed rehabilitation facilities, possibly many more. A facility can legally operate without a license if it doesn't provide one of five defined types of treatment, and those are listed there, the bottom one being detoxification. And I need to make the note, it's challenging for the city to identify the total number of unlicensed facilities in the community. Talk about that a little bit more. And continuing on the background, the city and many residents believe that Newport Beach, especially parts of the peninsula and west Newport, are over-concentrated with these recovery facilities. Indeed, we have 14, almost 15 percent of all licensed beds in Orange County. If we were to distribute all of the beds licensed in California, we would need 48 of them, yet we have 213, and this, of course, does not count the number of unlicensed beds, which may be significantly more, as noted. We recognize that this overconcentration's secondary effects may change the character of neighborhoods, and the overconcentration itself may not be beneficial to persons in recovery. And I need to note finally that the Attorney General asked us and a number of cities for our perspective on whether the Director of ADP should deny new treatment applications when a community has met, quote, "its local need" for beds, and we argued indeed that the Director should do so. That Attorney General's opinion is under preparation now. Continuing on background, state law, and I cite the code section, tells cities that certain facilities, and these are licensed facilities with six or fewer residents, must be treated just as the city treats any other single-family use. And these provisions apply only to licensed treatment facilities, not to unlicensed. Some operators, of course, have a business model that links up a series of two or more, six and unders, with a license, and they link them into an integrated system of facilities receiving common services, on common schedules, and under common management, and that's what we refer to as this integral facilities concept. Persons in recovery are protected when it comes to housing opportunities, under the California Fair Employment and Housing Act, and the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act, and the FHAA added handicap and familial status to the FHA. Handicap includes persons recovering from alcohol or drug addictions, but not necessarily persons currently using. Cities are prohibited from adopting or enforcing policies that are discriminatory or that have a disparate impact on members of a protected class, and we're required to make reasonable accommodation in these cases when asked. Continuing on background, in 2004, the city adopted what was called the Federal Exception Permit Process, or approach, or FEP, I'll call it, to regulating homes with more than six residents. Now, no FEP was ever issued, no business applied for one, even though we believe some probably should have. Some applicants indeed told the city that they were, quote, "six and unders," but then went ahead and received a license from ADP allowing more than six residents. Some applicants receive multiple licenses as six and unders and operate today as a single large recovery program. In April of 2007, the council adopted the short-term moratorium on new group residential uses, and in accordance with that Health and Safety Code, it exempted licensed six and unders, but those that are not operating integrally. We extended, you extended the moratorium once on May 30th through October 30th to allow the Planning Commission of the council to research and adopt these new ordinances relating group residential uses. Planning Commission met twice, in August and September, and the conclusion of the September meeting, they forwarded proposed ordinances to the city council. In September, the council hired Richards, Watson, and Gershon, that's why Jim Markman is here, to advise the council and the Planning Commission if need be on these new ordinances. And tonight, the council's asked to extend the moratorium for a second time. The maximum time left is 12 months. The state law says you can have one extension and a second extension. This is the last opportunity to extend this moratorium. Let me talk about the moratorium. The one in place today prohibits the establishment of new licensed facilities, whether that be Department of Social Services, Department of Public Health, or Alcohol and Drug Programs, of seven and over. That's Section 2A of the ordinance. It also prohibits unlicensed facilities of any size, it's also Section 2A, and it also prohibits licensed six and unders that are operating integrally with other group residential uses. The current moratorium also sets forth the city's only current definition of integral facilities, that's in 2B3. It prohibits the issuance of any new federal exception permit. It allows group residential applicants to ask for a reasonable accommodation from the moratorium. No one has done that at this point, and it expires at the end of this month. There's been some discussion in the community about whether or not there's a loophole in the moratorium, and the suggestion was that the moratorium did not restrict licensed six and unders and/or unlicensed six and unders, and Jim opined that licensed six and unders indeed were not restricted and cannot be restricted. We noted that. The second bullet there is that the moratorium applied to and continues to apply to any-sized unlicensed facility, six and under or seven and over. And two sections of the proposed extension of the moratorium, as written tonight, clarify that. The terminology is, just has some four examples in there rather than changing the actual Now, since the moratorium has been in place, we're not aware of any new licensed facilities of any size that have been approved either by the state nor the city, and we know this because we communicate with the Department of Alcohol and Drug Programs. Now, one applicant had attempted to secure a state license, and the city has asked that the state deny it because we believed that this application involves two six and unders operating integrally. We are not aware that any new unlicensed facilities have opened since the moratorium. However, we are aware of one attempt to open one facility, and we do follow up when we hear of a possible opening that may violate the moratorium. And businesses that open as a new facility during this moratorium period are subject to the moratorium, they will not be considered grandfathered, and they will be subject to new regulations once adopted, if not abatement during the moratorium period. So let me cover some of the key issues that the Planning Commission discussed and that will come before the council. One is indeed whether to regulate all unlicensed facilities. Another is an appropriate definition for integral facilities. A third is dispersion, should there be a distancing requirement between facilities? And next, whether to exclude some group residential uses or recovery assembling areas from certain zones, such as residential zones, R1, R1.5, R2, and commercial zones. Fifth bullet down, whether or not there should be an overlay zone, should there be a zone that describes part of the community that has, sorry, has lot characteristics that lend themselves to overconcentration, or that have a greater adverse impact from intensity of use that may come from overconcentration, such as small, narrow lots with narrow setbacks? Next on the key issues is a conditional use permit process. If one is used, what should the CUPs contain? What would those conditions look like? A key issue for you will be abatement, whether to abate existing uses, what criterion to use, and what should be that timeline for abatement? Next, how to appropriately provide reasonable accommodation from whatever ordinances are adopted? And finally, whether all group residential uses that are transitory in nature should be addressed within these ordinances, and that would mean boarding houses, short-term lodgings, et cetera. Now, let me, I'm going to start to close here by offering the timeline. Tonight, you're asked to extend the moratorium. Throughout the rest of the month, in November, Jim and RWG will continue to research, meet with affected parties, and taking direction from your ad hoc committee. In early December, Jim has offered to deliver kind of a palette of options for the proposed ordinances and potentially seek council direction on 12/11. And December, that would indeed be a meeting where you could discuss that, potentially schedule another council meeting if need be. January 8th could be the first reading of the ordinance, 22nd the second, and then all of our ordinances take effect 30 days after that. The moratorium would expire after that. You could rescind the moratorium at that time, or you could continue it for 12 months. Couple of issues regarding the timeline. Will these changes be significant enough to return the ordinances to the Planning Commission? You don't have to send them back. The Newport Beach Municipal Code said you could send them back, but you're not required to do so. Does the timeline allow enough time for Jim and his colleagues to research past issues and deliberations? Does it allow for enough public input? And indeed, should there be special council meetings to maintain or speed up the schedule? So the recommended action tonight, and I'll close with this, hold the public hearing, receive and file what is in your staff report as a report of measures taken. That's a requirement that you take a look at that, and then adopt the interim emergency ordinance. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm done with my presentation.
Thank you. Jim, is there anything that you'd like to add to that presentation?
Yeah, let me add some points that we understand is involved in our doing this work, and it's a little more than, it's a little more than what was up on the PowerPoint. For one thing, we, I'm telling the council and the public, we accept the timeline, we expect to deliver our thinking in early December with options and expose that thinking to the public process. What we think we're going to try to do, what we think our charter is, is to produce an ordinance that deals with problems associated with overconcentration of group home uses, including an assessment of monetary risks that are inherent in taking different approaches, and we intend to invite input from, work with citizens groups, operators, and all of their attorneys. The bottom line is, we know that our direction includes an aggressive approach, not a reckless approach, but an aggressive approach to this problem, and we, one thing I'd like to add personally, from what I've read, I've read all this scholarship by city special counsel and city attorney, by the citizens group, all very well done. I don't think there's any lawyers I would criticize, but one thing we want to add that I don't think is there is, some practicality to our approach. In other words, if there's a problem there and you want legal input in how to deal with and solve the problem, which would mean alleviate the secondary effects, alleviate the overconcentration as rapidly as possible, then what we will be recommending is a legal position that allows you to do that. That may be in accord, or not in accord, with the most aggressive position we could lead you to, but if we lead you in an over-aggressive way, you could be locked down by injunctions for a long period of time before you actually alleviate any of these problems. So ultimately, we have to take all this into account, because I know what the public and the council want is relief from the problem as quickly as possible. Also want to say that there are other things that are included in what we've been asked to do, and one of those is a conflict of interest audit for the entire council, so we intend to gather all the disclosure information for the, every member of the council and look at it, and both for the council's sake and the public's sake, be able to give assurance that there is no reason for any council member to abstain from this process, or if we find a reason, we'll be asking that council member to abstain from the process. And in doing so, since I have talked to enough people to know, some people feel they have information that would help us reach these conclusions, I would invite anyone from the public, any of the attorneys with that information, to send it to my office. We will keep it confidential in our office, other than the fact that we would have to apply it to our analysis. So if you have that information and you don't think somebody ought to be involved in this process, please give us that information, and if it's true, that'll be the fastest way to remove that person from the process. If it's not true, then no harm, no foul. I guess the last thing I'd like to say is, we do recommend the full one-year extension. Let me repeat, from our point of view, that's not buying more time for us to do our work. We are going to do our work in the timeline that we suggested, but I don't think it would be prudent not to take this last opportunity for a moratorium extension to use it to the maximum, because none of us can predict where we will be. We would like to predict where we would be in three or four months, but if we're not there and we have a short moratorium and it runs out, you will be wide open to more proliferation of these uses if you don't have an ordinance in place, and I don't see any reason to take that risk. There's going to be a lot of input, people with different approaches. Why not keep the uses out under the moratorium for the longest period of time possible? Not so we can drag our feet, but so that you protect yourself against what you can't foresee. So we recommend adopting, passing the ordinance, which is an urgency ordinance tonight, as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. Does council have any questions of either Dave or Jim?
You've done some preliminary work, talked to some people already, or as far as, before this evening?
Yes, we have reviewed much of the legal work done in the past, and we've also met with and talked with representatives of the formal citizens group and their attorneys. We've talked to the attorneys representing one of the operators, the large operators, more than once. We're not trying to talk, we're trying to listen and absorb their input and understand where, you know, why they have taken the position they've taken, and why they're clearly recommending the approach they're recommending. We'll continue to do so.
Councilman Hen?
Jim, I appreciate that. I think you've already done quite a bit of work, and I just wanted to make sure that it's clear, and you should correct me if I'm wrong about this, that although you are considering the input from all parties, including staff, outside council, council for citizens, council for the operators and whatnot, that the conclusions that you will reach and the recommendations that you might make will be your recommendations, those of your firm, based upon your considered analysis of the entire issue, as it relates to direction you get from, directly from the city council. Is that a fair summary?
Absolutely.
Okay, with that, I'll open it up for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Michael Titus, I represent Concerned Citizens Group. I just have a couple of quick questions. One, when you mentioned up there the, what the moratorium applies to, I'm assuming because it's implicit that you couldn't expand the facility. I want to get confirmation of that. The second thing is, there's a concern that people might open up a six and under-licensed, which isn't subject to the moratorium, and then turn around a week later and sell it to an integrated facility. Want a confirmation that that would not be covered, that would also be prohibited in the moratorium. And lastly, I noticed that you mentioned, and I wasn't clear, I assume you mean that you're not going to send this back to the Planning Commission. One of the concerns the citizens had was that we spent an enormous amount of time at the Planning Commission, going back and forth, back and forth. This is a city council decision, and that's where it really needs to rest. So I'd like to have confirmation, to close the hearing if you'd like to. Other than that, we look forward to working with everybody on this, and hopefully we'll get it quickly. The key here is quickly. Now, we understand you have a timeline up there, we'd like you to hold to the timeline. The only thing we would want you to do is, if you could do it faster, put 30 days faster on it. Realistically, there is no question at this point in time that there are people in your city who are severely impacted. The city recognized it in a letter to the Attorney General, even pointed out the areas where they knew there's specific problems. It is a problem, and these people are suffering day after day after day. And if you have to live next to it, I think you would also want to put an accelerator on getting it done. We understand, I don't think the delay is going to come in from New Council, he's very experienced, he's done this in some of the cities. We just need to make sure we get it done quicker, and if you can get it done quicker, I think so in everybody's best interest. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Jim, would you like to respond to any of that?
I'd like to respond to the issue about sending this back to the Planning Commission. That's certainly not the intention or the wish of anybody working on this. The only time I would recommend sending it back, the only circumstance which would cause me to make that recommendation, would be that to do so would avoid a legal exposure as to the validity of the ordinance. In other words, if the ordinance is so different that somebody could argue you're amending your zoning ordinance and what you really did was never really considered by the Planning Commission, you could have a legal defect, but that would be the only circumstance where we'd recommend sending it back, and based on what I've looked at, I doubt that that circumstance will arise.
And what about the two instances of whether the moratorium extends to sale of newly-established licensed six and unders to other facilities and like, that's the first question?
Well, I think, you know, what the moratorium says is that no permit will be issued and nobody will establish, the exact language of the section, is that nobody will establish one of these prohibited uses while the moratorium is in effect. No new transitory use shall be established or operated. So if something constitutes a new use, I suppose there could be an issue over that. Somebody may have a present use that is a large use and have three empty beds tonight, and then tomorrow night they fill them. I probably wouldn't conclude that that's, you know, expanded or a new use, but if somebody, you know, moved into a part of a facility significantly enlarging their use, or moved into a brand-new facility, even if they left another one, I would facility, even if they left another one, I would probably conclude that is a new use and that we ought to abate it. So, I mean, that's the only way I can answer the question. We'd have to look at the circumstance, but pretty much this is meant to stop any, any proliferation of this problem.
So, so again, to repeat his question, if someone, let's say, were to go to ADP and get a license for a new facility and then sell it to another operator who integrally used it in their operation, is that considered a violation of a moratorium?
Yes. Think it is.
Thank you.
I have a further question regarding this issue of going back to the planning commission. Suppose that there is an issue that the planning commission considered and decided in one fashion, and then in the final ordinance adopted by the city council, the council decides to adopt a different view of that particular issue, something different than what the planning commission decided. It's my understanding, based on what you said, that since the planning commission considered that issue, the fact that council decided differently would not be a legal reason to be sending it back to the planning commission.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Anybody else from the public that'd like to comment on this agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, council. Ed Vandenberg, I live on Fortieth Street. Recently, it came to my attention that the city of Sausalito had a problem with a similar setup. I just wondered, their approach seemed very direct. I was wondering if that had been considered as an alternative style of approach by our council, our legal council?
That's part of the equation. As a matter of fact, Sausalito has struck early and rather than agreeing with the establishment of, I believe it's four or five different buildings having six or less people in them, in a campus setting where the buildings are actually sitting there together, Sausalito has brought a lawsuit to try to, to try to abate that use. It was filed this week. We have the pleadings, and we will be in contact with the lawyers handling this for Sausalito. The difference here, of course, is that these uses are already established, and you never even defined integral use or trying to prohibit integral use until earlier this year. So we're working backwards. That is, we're, we're trying to deal with the situation already existing. Sausalito's trying to stop it before it starts, essentially. But we concur with their approach. We intend to support their approach as part of our process here any way we can. Usually not so much in the trial court process, but if there's an expected appeal and that goes up on appeal, I'm sure Newport Beach will be supporting as an amicus in the case, the efforts of Sausalito. And if they're successful, they'll be very helpful to our process.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that'd like to comment on this item?
Hello, I'm Max Liskin, and I'd like to, just very early on, say that some of the comments are already obsoleted by the mayor's opening remarks and the presentations which was given tonight. I, for one, think that the city is doing a lot about this problem, and I see it in the amount of effort that has been expended since it's been brought to the city's attention. And I do not agree with an adversarial approach because I only think that what it does is divides and conquers. And I think that the people who operate these facilities, which are causing us to be uncomfortable, are sitting on the sidelines to some degree and watching, and they're seeing how really we've turned Newport into a dysfunctional family. And it's no different than what we're trying to stop, and I think that's very ironic. I think that everyone who lives in Newport treasures it, and I think that we have to give the city time to address the issue. Now, I know if you have one of these next to you, you think, gee, this is terrible. I think if you've gone to the city for several years and complained about it, you say they're not listening. But think of the city's perspective. The city deals with a lot of issues, and a lot of times, people come to the city with problems that end up being nothing. So, and also consider the fact of how few people actually live on the peninsula and how few people, how small our community is. And then you might understand that if you're living next to it, it's a big problem, but everyone did not know this several years ago. And I think the important thing here is to give our elected officials the benefit of the doubt. And I'm sorry if people here disagree with me. I was one of the first people to give money to the concerned citizens of Newport. I've watched as I've made their points, but I think at a certain point, when we start turning against each other about past problems, which we don't even know if they were true or not, we're really hurting our cause. And I think we can do some things in the immediate future which will help. For example, there are certain cities, City of Oakland, which has just put in new anti-smoking rules. So if you're a neighbor to a rehab and there's a lot of smoking, maybe we can do something about that in terms of where people can smoke outside. Maybe we can do something about meetings outside in numbers of people. Things that, you know, will have an immediate effect and things which are not viewed as discriminatory. Finally, I think that the city has global issues with code enforcement. And this really comes down to, I know that we're looking at it from different perspectives, but when it gets down to the use of these properties, we can go at it from a planning commission, but really initially, people looked at it from a code enforcement, and we're moving. So why don't we just let the city do its work, try not to kill each other, and if things don't work out, there are always other alternatives. But I think the last thing people should do here is be talking about lawsuits, is be talking about what people did who worked for the city without being able to substantiate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liskin. Anybody else that has a comment on this agenda item?
Mayor, council, Denise Oberman. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to submit to the record a, a small petition from the irate small community. It's about 1,089 signatures. Just to offer the city some assurance that it isn't just a group of a handful of so-called activists or radicals that are looking for a remedy to this situation. Secondly, I would like to say, I appreciate what Max is saying. We have been trying to work with the city now, really since before 2004. This is not a new issue for the citizens. They're experiencing the impacts of over-concentration. We're asking you for a remedy, not only to get rid of the current over-concentration and the damage that it's causing, but also a proactive use-based plan so that you can prevent this type of institutionalization from occurring throughout the city and in particular, the coastal communities. If it goes much further, it's going to be an irreversible situation, and this is going to become an institutional community. And we worked very hard to propose a solution, the major portion of which was apparently rejected by the planning commission, which was represented in the outstanding key issues. So we were disappointed, and we do not want to wait for a year to get something done. We have confidence that the city has sufficient information, if it has political will, to make a decision. Thank you.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. I have sort of a question. It's been my understanding that the state claims this is their jurisdiction. And I have worked or, or used the, the idea that the state indeed is supposed to license facilities here, and they're supposed to ensure that the, the facilities have proper places to meet, proper places to eat, that, that the living room of a, a small facility isn't being used as a bedroom, that these kinds of, there's code in, in the state law. I assume that that was shareable with our community and that we could use that data and so forth to write our laws. And, and I believe that that certainly should be the case. But I'm asking the question, do you have any opinion that, in opposite to that? Or, in other words, are we able to work with the state to find out where these places are that are licensed, how big they are? We should have this, I mean, are, are we working in opposition or are we working together?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer Mr. Nichols' questions.
Sure, go ahead. Take a stab at it.
We have been relatively successful working with the state to get information. And for example, anyone at home can get on the state's website and look at all licensed facilities, and those, those listings will show them county by county. So you'd look, obviously look at Orange County, and they're not all, Newport Beach are not all lumped together, but you can find them there. That's how I came up with my 24 number. It will show the name of the operator, the address of the facility, the amount of people who it's licensed to provide beds for versus the amount that can be occupied there. Now, Mr. Nichols also asked a second question. Are they working against us or for us? They have been good about providing information. However, to me, it's clear that their job in ADP is to license new facilities. So thus, our assertion to the Attorney General that the director of that department should indeed be stopping licenses when a community has met its local need. Even though that's in state law, the department doesn't choose to enforce it, which is why others, not us, ask the Attorney General to look at that.
Thank you.
David Diamond, Newport Beach. To address the gentleman who spoke prior to Mr. Nichols, it's not a matter of having a home next to you. I have one of these across the street from me, directly across the street. I have one two and a half feet from me on the right side, and I have two of them behind me, just behind the alley. There are an additional three homes on 39th Street, the 100 block where I live. So it's not just an inconvenience. Secondly, I have never accused anyone of having done anything wrong. I think some bad decisions have been made by some people in the past, but have never accused anyone. And I, so some may, some may, others do not. I think the, the fact that the council will be checking on these things and asking people questions will be very helpful because it will clear the air for people who have only the best intentions of the citizens of this, of this community, and we will know that and have confidence in the decisions that are being made. The other area is, when we talk about 24 licensed facilities, I think, I'm not sure, but my guess would be, you're talking about 24 locations of licensed facilities. And in not knowing which all of them, let's just say, I, I bet more than a preponderance of them have two units there. So they're actually operating two homes of, let's say, six or seven, whatever it's going to be. So it would be the equivalent of having 48 licensed homes in the city. I could be wrong, but I'll just pose that for, for your analysis. Also, it's the unlicensed homes which are, we think about three times in number the amount of licensed homes, and they also have more than one unit per location. So the, the problem is much greater than I think most people are aware of. I think the city council and staff are becoming aware and have become aware of how large or a much larger problem is than, than they had, they had been aware of. And my last point, I seem to have, I have forgotten. But I, I understand the council is saying that the moratorium, although we really would like, like a shorter moratorium for the purpose of getting everything included, it makes legal sense to have the 12 months and get things. Oh, I do recall now. As to the state, a representative from the, the state alcohol and drug prevention or programs met me in front of my, my residence. I saw him looking across at one of the, the unit across the street, and he asked me if that is a licensed or unlicensed home. And I asked who he was. He gave me a card. I said, well, that's your agency. Your agency licenses them. And he said, well, our records aren't that good, and we don't know. This was a period of about nine months ago. And I said, well, you have computers. He said, they're not accurate. So just have that to be taken into your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. David, did you want to respond to his?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, again, it's like, like I did, we could all look at the website. Mr. Diamond is correct that a, a few of them are Unit A and Unit B, or Unit 1 and Unit 2. That, and remember, as we talked about in the presentation, that's part of the challenge with the licensing process, is that they will seek two separate licenses for what is clear to me at least, and I think to 99% of the population, that these are, this is one large facility operating under the license six-and-under loophole that's in state law. So actually, of those 24, again, 14 of them are, are sixes, but they're operated, I would argue that 13 of those are operated integrally with other ones, not necessarily right on that property site, but nearby. And finally, I, I didn't want to leave anyone with the impression that we think there are not much more than 24 out there because, as I noted, there are a significant number of unlicensed facilities, and it's just difficult to figure out where those are. We are trying to work as diligent as we can to figure those out and yet still protect the residents' privacy and do that at the same time for, for a regulatory purpose.
Thank you, Dave.
Hi, my name is Joel Slutske. I live in Lido Isle. First of all, I'd like to commend you, Mayor, for your opening comments. I think that was very important. I think the presentation was terrific. And I, for the first time, have a real warm feeling about somebody looking at the problem. I attended the planning commission meeting and listened to the outside council there, and it caused me to go back to Lido Isle. We now have 24 people on Lido Isle that are part of committees just on this subject, and we've never had anything like that happen before. So I, for the first time, feel like somebody is going to address the issue. There's two comments I would like to make. One is, we have a moratorium. I think it's important to, to enforce the moratorium. I'm not sure what's going on. The fact that six-and-unders evidently don't have to be licensed is, is disturbing. So enforcing the moratorium, somebody's got to proactively do that. And I want to tell you that the last planning commission meeting, at the end of the meeting, somebody, one of the planning commissioners said, do six-and-unders have to have a business license? And the answer came back clearly, I don't know if this is correct, but it came back clearly, yes. And nobody asked the next question, is why don't they have business, and why haven't we been enforcing that? I think if we can enforce the business license, at least we'd know where they are. And, and, and if there is a moratorium, then, then of course, you can always sneak around the business license, but, but you have some mechanism for knowing where, who has started and when they've started. The other thing is, there could be a, in the interim period, a use license that, that might be put, I recognize that would be an ordinance in itself, but I'd like to suggest at least to enforce the business license, and if we could get a use license, that'd be terrific.
Thank you, Mr. Slutske. Does Jim or Dave, do you want, do you want to respond to some of those comments? I, I think it's, if you could re-stress for Mr. Slutske and the rest of the audience, the about six-and-unders, that there's two different varieties here, licensed and unlicensed, and, and the exemptions that follow.
Yeah, I, I understand. It's a, it's a confusing subject and a confusing distinction. So remember to think of it this way. Think of a, first, think, is the facility licensed or not? If it is licensed, and if it has six or fewer beds, then the city has to treat it like any other single-family use. So just like a, an ordinary family. So just like an ordinary family. However, if it is licensed and it has seven or more, we can regulate it through a process. If it's unlicensed, and again, an unlicensed facility would be a typical quote-unquote sober living home where the people do not receive treatment at their home. They may go elsewhere to a meeting, for instance. But if it's unlicensed like that, the city can regulate it. And that's what's, and indeed, the moratorium applies to those all unlicensed facilities. So I hope that distinction's clear. If it's not, we can keep trying, but I know it's hard to wrestle with.
What about the business license aspects of what he?
Let me add to that. Again, we're bound to the distinction between licensed and unlicensed facilities. The licensed facilities, hopefully, we can track from state officials. So we can track them, know where they are and know who's there because they have applications at the state. The unlicensed facilities are not exempt from paying business license taxes. The licensed ones are exempt. So the other ones are, as far as I'm concerned, and I think this agrees with prior councils, look at this, are subject to the business license tax. And to be subject to it means you have to file a tax return, if you will, or something much like a tax return where you have to disclose addresses, names of operators, people responsible to pay the tax, and other information which I think could be very useful to us. So one way or the other, we should be able to track these unlicensed as well as the licensed uses.
Are you suggesting or implying that we can do that prior to adoption of the new ordinance, just based upon our existing ordinance?
The business license ordinance is a tax measure. It's a revenue raiser, and if they're subject to it, there's no reason not to apply it to them. As a matter of fact, they not only ought to disclose the information, they ought to pay their taxes.
Mr. Kiff, can you explain to us how we might go out and require somebody to have a business license that's operating an unlicensed facility, so that we can make sure that that's conformed with? What are we allowed to do in doing that?
Well, I'll tell you what we have been doing. And basically, that's looking at any known information source we have, from Craigslist to the newspaper, to meeting locations, to figure out where someone may reside in an unlicensed environment. We also do get some information from residents who say, "Hey, I think this is a facility next to mine," and they'll identify certain characteristics that may be common, but not necessarily directly linked to that use, like a bunch of bicycles or routine deliveries or things like that. We're not trying to be prejudicial here. We are just trying to identify, again, respecting folks' right to privacy. So that's the method that we go about doing that, Mr. Webber.
I would like to add with regard to the business licenses, at least my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, the business license is not meant as a way to allow businesses to exist or not exist in the city. Anybody who comes and applies for a business license and they say they have a business, there's no list of businesses that are permitted in the city and lists of businesses that are not permitted in the city. Certainly, you can't conduct illegal activity in the city, but I think if you came in for a business license to operate an illegal business, they may actually give you the business license. And so even from the standpoint of requiring the business license, which if we can, as Mr. Markham suggests we can, I think we should be pursuing that. But that is not going to stop an operator from operating an unlicensed facility, a 6 and under licensed facility, a 7 and over licensed facility, or a 7 and over unlicensed facility, or any type of integral facility. It's just going to force them to pay their 130 some odd dollars, and they'll get a business license. Of course, hopefully, we'll have a better idea of maybe where these businesses are located, which I think will be an advantage. I think that'll help us in our enforcement efforts. And so to that extent, I would recommend that we pursue that. Sir?
Shelley Dawkins, Newport Beach, resident. Licensed or unlicensed, let's just keep it simple and extend the moratorium to include licensed or unlicensed, and we can always resolve who has it or the legal action required. I agree with some of the previous speakers that the presentation was excellent. With all the questions to be resolved, discovered, information to be uncovered, it should be a no-brainer to extend this moratorium. I know that lurking in the background is the fear of discrimination. The Americans with Disabilities Act says reasonable accommodation. It's been mentioned at least a dozen times already tonight. We have overaccommodated the alcohol and drug rehabilitation houses. Our numbers absolutely prove that. And there would be no danger in going to court on a discrimination case for there. We lead the country in drug and alcohol, so we're on solid ground there. The state follows the federal ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act. And another part of the Americans with Disabilities Act is that there is a provision for undue hardship. And you've heard instance after instance in the past here of the smoke, of the traffic, of the cussing out, of the vandalism, of the noise, of the proximity of places to each other. If that isn't undue hardship, I don't know what is. All I'm saying is that's part of the legal process too, of defense against discrimination. So we've got two things absolutely in our favor. One, we have overaccommodated, and two, we have absolute evidence of undue hardship on our people. So please, have the courage to extend this moratorium, to maybe do as, was it Sausalito did, and try and prevent more from occurring. What's happening is you're destroying our family life. You're destroying our neighborhoods. It's destroying our communities. Ultimately, it will destroy the wonderful life we have here in Newport Beach. Please, extend this moratorium, answer these questions, and use this as a first step towards limiting any future beyond the moratorium. Let's think ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Getting sleepy, so I thought I should get up and talk before I want to go home. Hi, my name is Dolores Auding. I live in Newport Beach. First of all, I would hope that with this ordinance that we'll be redoing, I guess, that we use and incorporate the definitions that the state uses, and so we're all on the same page, because in the past, we've kind of like made up our own and then had to define what they were, and then had to figure out what the state was. And so it would be easier if we just did everything the same way. And I'm glad to see that we've come a long way from the campaign that we recently had where everyone said there was nothing we could do, there was nothing we could do, there was nothing we could do. Well, I'm glad that we're doing something for the residents, because as I've said to a lot of people, I don't live on the peninsula. I'm very fortunate to live where I live. And I don't have to worry about going to my car at night. I don't have to worry about calling up on my neighbors and because they're making too much noise, or there's obscenities, or they're outside, and then fearing retaliation. I don't have to worry about my car being keyed or my home being urinated on or anything like that. And I know that if I lived down there, I'd be having a different conversation with all of you. So no matter what is said and how the people say it, this is their life, this is all they have, this is all they own. And if tempers flare sometimes, we are one big family, and we have a lot of pain in certain areas. And for Mr. Diamond, for where he lives, God bless him, because I don't think I could do it. And then next, I can only speak from my own personal experience on this, but one day I was at work when we had our trash business, and I got paged. And my pager went off, and I called the number, and I was sued by the City of Santa Ana and Waste Management. I was sued under the Health and Safety Codes, and I was sued as a public nuisance, and I had to appear in court the next day within 24 hours. I have a friend of mine, she has some granddaughters, and their father lives on 39th Street by the flop house that Mr. Diamond knows about, okay? I don't understand why, when we do this code enforcement that we're doing, if some of these homes are a Health and Safety Code violation, are a public nuisance, why we're waiting to get this one operator into court in December, okay? If I could go into court within 24 hours and I was picking up trash, okay? I wasn't a real public nuisance, and I've spoken to the new police chief about it, I spoke to Lieutenant Fox about it, and this is a real issue. We have a problem with code enforcement, and that's a reason why a lot of these people are extremely upset. And if we need to change our ways, well, we need to do that. Whether there's a moratorium or not, there are rules that are being broken, and I think that it's the obligation of all of us to do the best job that we can do in this city. We deserve that. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Dolores. Dave, do you have any response to Dolores's question?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Auding is referring to a case on 39th Street, and actually, that gentleman does indeed have a criminal court date as well as a civil court date. He has, there has been an arraignment, and that's what usually happens that quickly. So the city is pursuing that case.
Thank you. I'll tell you, why don't we go through the other folks who want to speak? And if you still want to talk some more at the end, we'll entertain that. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this matter?
Relating, I'm Marcio Hearn, 201, the Anis. Relating to what Dolores Auding said, I several times have passed one of these homes and smelled marijuana. Now, I have not called the police. I assume our police are too busy to bother with some of this minor, if you consider marijuana use minor compared to other drug problems. But should I be calling?
Well, you have to do.
Yes, most certainly. Please do.
Should I expect prompt attention to that, or is it something that they will probably prioritize that's not that important?
Well, it really literally depends on what else they're dealing with at that moment. If they have an aggressive traffic accident they're dealing with, or some crime in progress, they'll of course handle that first. But if there's nothing else in their docket, they'll be right out to do that. I would encourage anyone to always call on a suspected violation like that. Even if it is not followed up right away, it's something that's entered into the record.
All right, thank you.
And I might add, not just related to what you perceive to be a group home or a sober living home, I mean, because we have these issues come up in many contexts, not just with this issue, but other issues where people are saying, you know, "Help us with this problem." And then, I'll give you a for instance, we had one with this Newport Brewery Company just recently, and we went through examination of their use permit. But if there are no, at least, reported complaints on file with the police department or code enforcement, it makes it very difficult for the city to act in its capacity without backup, because if you've got to go to court someday, that's what the judge wants to look at. He wants to see police reports, he wants to see code enforcement actions, things like that. It starts with you folks calling when you see something that you perceive is happening that violates our codes, our ordinances, or is impacting you in a negative way. Anybody else that would like to speak on this matter?
My name is Willis Longear. I live on Lido, and I admire the fact that you spend your evenings doing this. I hate, I hate being here, and a lot of other people do too, but we have few people here. I was out getting petitions signed, and I had probably 95% acceptance of the petitions of the people I could find at home. I only found half the people in my neighborhood at home. So I can assume that if I worked at it long enough, we could perhaps double this list of petitions that have been signed, or triple it. The people are upset, and I hope that you hear them and that you will do something about it, rather than hoping that we go away, because I don't think we're going to go away. It'll just be here and be here and be here, unfortunately for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to speak on this issue?
David Diamond, thank you for your courtesy, Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to address the issue of business licenses, because the discussion was, when do you require a business license? And there was a discussion of 6 and under unlicensed homes and licensed homes. Every landlord in the city of Newport Beach that rents 6 and under, where the occupancy is 31 days or less than 31 days, must get a business license and report annually to the city the income that they've received from such short-term rentals and income they receive from longer-term tenants, and report that to the city. So I thought we could be doing this for these homes, because it would be nothing that is different than what we're requiring other landlords and other tenants to be involved with, without regard to whether they're group homes or not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody want to respond to that comment?
Yeah, real quickly, unfortunately, that, while that may make, it makes a lot of logical sense, the fact is that the landlord who's going to be the owner of the property is going to lease the facility to an operator, which is a company which has a license from the state for 6 and under, and that license, that licensee is exempt by state law from having to pay a business license, which means there's no application of the ordinance to them, so they don't register. So that's the way it's working. But the ones who aren't licensed should get their business licenses and pay their taxes.
Can I make a clarification there too, in addition to what Jim said? Remember that we know where the licensed, all of the licensed facilities are. We know the names of the owners, the location, and again, anybody can find out from home. So the tool that we're talking about, a business license to know information, is already there for any licensed facility.
Councilman, head.
I think we need to go back over this. My understanding was that state law prohibits us from charging or taxing these entities under the business license, but does not exempt them from having to file the paperwork for a business, to get a business license, if we don't charge them.
Well, I haven't looked at your ordinance, but I've seen lots of them. And normally, the only purpose for, the only thing you have to file is essentially a tax return, where you fill out certain information, your taxes are computed, and you pay it. Then you get a license. So if you can connect the purpose of the ordinance, which is revenue raising, I don't think, I've never seen a city independently bring in action or otherwise compel somebody to register or give information that would be necessary to get a business license when they don't owe a tax. But I think what Dave said is true. Those people, while they may be exempt from your business license tax and its ordinance as a practical matter, are giving the same information you will want to the state, which we retrieve anyway. So those are known to us. So as a practical matter, we have all the information we need about the ones that are exempt. The ones that aren't exempt from paying your license tax, business license tax, should be made to go through this process. And you'll have a handle on all of them as far as locational information and what's going on.
All right, good. And then furthermore, as a part of the deliberations on the new ordinances, it's my understanding that we are, we will be considering expanding the form that we use for business licenses. And so I want to make sure we don't lose track of that along the way.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. I think this is a key, though, because all those 6 and unders, they're responsible for that tax, and they're responsible for the full TOT tax.
Thank you, Dave.
And they have a choice. They can either license and prove that they're a licensed facility, or pay the tax.
Thank you.
That's something that costs a lot of money for.
Councilman Gardner.
Oh, I don't know. Somebody stood up. I thought we were through with public comment.
No, I haven't closed public comments yet.
Oh, okay.
Well, he did. I hadn't invited him to the podium, but I let him come up and speak anyways. Yeah, sure, this, you know what? We're not going to be going through double round, it'll be the last gentleman that can come back for the second shot here. Everybody gets their time.
Something that came up in between. And this is really informative about this.
And this is really informative about this license.
Can we get your name again, sir?
Ed Vandembosh, 40th Street.
Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome. Tragic occupancy tax. You said certain exemptions from business license tax. What about the places that advertise so much a week? Or do they owe the, should they owe the TOT, or is it qualified? Maybe some do and some don't? That's really interesting to me.
Dave? Mr. Mayor, we're examining that issue right now, and now that Jim is on board, we'll ask him those same questions.
Thank you.
I'll wait till I'm asked, but...
My name is Laura Curran. I live in Corona del Mar. Just wanted to let you know that of the signatures that were presented, 110 are from Corona del Mar. And it was actually a very pleasant opportunity to spend the afternoon at Farmer's Market, and I can tell you that half the people at Farmer's Market are not from Corona del Mar or Newport. They're from all over Orange County. If you have a home next to you, it has a serious impact, as you can well imagine, but that's only one type of impact. One of the people that, several people that spoke to me really kind of touched me when they talked about how the group homes affect a resident of Corona del Mar. Specifically, several mothers who were there with their children said they really avoid going down to the pier at many times of the day with their children, because they feel that the atmosphere is no longer appropriate for them and their children. So I just wanted to, you know, reiterate the idea that we're all a community in a neighborhood, and what happens in one end of the community is understood and affected by others. And your constituents appreciate your help with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comments. Councilman Gardner?
I'd like to move the motion.
Second.
Any further comment?
Nope, excuse me. I'm sorry. I thought Nancy was reaching for comment. I do have a comment to make.
Even up here, we get last minute.
You know, over the course of a 30-year business career, I've been involved in a lot of dozens, maybe hundreds, of highly stressful situations, and highly contentious situations. And from time to time, I've been in situations that I would characterize as being in violent agreement. This is a situation that feels just exactly like that. Violent agreement is where you're sitting around a table with a bunch of people that we, that all say they share the same goals, and yet it feels like they are on opposite sides of the issue for reasons that no one can really put their finger on. We've been in violent agreement on this situation, I believe. We share common goals. Along the way, I want to say that I am convinced that our city staff is honest and hardworking and well-intended and desirous of serving the citizens as best they can. That's demonstrated by the thousands of hours that have been devoted to this subject in the last, at least just a few months, perhaps. I'm convinced that the same is true of our council, everyone up here. I appreciate Mayor Rosansky's forthright statement to start the meeting. I believe that we all share the same goals. Having said that, I also believe that sometimes we have to address perceptions as well as facts. And I think we have endeavored to address the perceptions as well as possible. Specifically, we've hired new outside counsel. We've taken steps to assure that that counsel, that outside counsel, the attorney, Richards, Watson, and Gershon, takes its direction directly from the city council. No filtering. He understands the mandate he gets from us, and he explains his view, his points of view to us, with nothing in between. Lastly, we've now set up an independent mechanism to address the issue of conflict here within the city, an independent entity that is going to do a conflict audit here. And then beyond all of that, there are state-mandated mechanisms that address and are responsible for addressing conflict issues. Those mechanisms do work. They're available. I understand they're being exercised. So with all of that, I need to implore everyone associated with this process that we need to set these other focuses aside for now, and we need to really complete the fulfillment of our core mission here, namely, to pass ordinances that reckon, that regulate group homes to the maximum extent permissible by law, to do that as rapidly as possible. We've extended or will extend this ordinance for a year. We're not going to take a year. We're going to get this done as fast as we can, and if I have any ability to assure it, certainly no longer than the timeline that's been presented in the staff report tonight. If there's a way to do it sooner, we'll do it sooner. I'm sure that that sentiment is shared by my colleagues up here. We don't like being here any more than anyone else, especially on extra meeting nights, and especially as, in my case, having just flown home from Europe last night. In addition to that, we need to enforce our codes as fully and aggressively as we can in accordance with our ordinances. If we do all three of those things, we will fulfill our mandate to our citizens and to ourselves, and I'm sure we will end up in peaceful agreement about this issue. I look forward to that happening at the earliest possible date. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hen, for those thoughts. Anybody else that wants to?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. In advance on voting on your measure tonight, there was a suggestion made by the chairman of the planning commission that we add one whereas. I have it up on the screen for you. And that, this is my error in not including that in the...
Actually, it was my error in not mentioning it earlier as well, because I was...
But basically, this whereas would go on the first page, for those of you at home are looking at this on your handouts, between the second and third whereas. And it just states what the planning commission has done and how it had open and public testimony. And then at the conclusion of that hearing, they forwarded on forward. So the staff would recommend that you include this within your motion and therefore include it in the resolution.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, I would like to amend it, as Mr. Kiff suggested.
Second, Ed?
Second.
Okay. All right, so we have an amended motion. All in favor, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes our one and only public hearing for tonight. Public comments? Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. Should we put the lights up? Councilmember Hen, thank you. You don't want me to fall asleep here.
If only to see you better, Dolores.
No. You don't want me to fall asleep up here. Hi, my name's Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. Normally, I'm not this sleepy, but I went to the dentist today, and that's very traumatic for me, because I really am afraid of the dentist, but I have a wonderful, wonderful dentist, and...
Did you get a fluoride treatment?
No, needless to say, that's what I did talk to my dentist about today, though. My dentist does belong to the American Dental Association, and she was surprised and shocked and extremely disappointed to find out that she didn't get any email from them regarding the interim changes in the guidelines for infants, and that is between zero and 12 months. If you have an infant, you're, you know, you aren't supposed to give them any fluoride, no fluoridated water. And so we discussed, you know, how does one give your, you know, like the baby a bath? And then from there, I explained to her that it's not your dental fluoride, because if it was dental fluoride, then you would have to get a prescription for it. And there is no prescription. And then I explained to her that the product was hydrophilic acid, and I'm laughing, and that it came from the fertilizer industry, and that it's the hazardous waste byproduct. And she just about passed out. I mean, it was, it was, it was really very, very disturbing for her and for me. So I just want you to realize that what metropolitan waste, yeah, what metropolitan waste, they should be called metropolitan waste instead of metropolitan water, is that they are a wholesaler, they don't have one person that has a hookup, and they didn't really have an obligation or a reason or a need to start to put hydrophilic acid in our drinking water. This is the year 2007. We get fluoride from just about everything. We get fluoride in water, we get fluoride in juice, we get fluoride on dried apricots, we get fluoride in milk and cereal. We get fluoride everywhere, and we're going to be overfluoridated. So I guess what I would like, people are always asking you to do things, and I feel really badly about that, but I've spoken with women in Irvine and some people up in Malibu and people in Agora Hills, and I know that we have a city managers meet, that meets in Orange County, and I imagine they meet in other areas. And I would hope that somehow we could form a coalition that would, with other cities, that we could use to maybe somehow stop this fluoride, I mean, slow it down. There isn't anyone that I talk to that wants to get hydrophilic acid in their, in their drinking water. Councilmember Webb, I have a few studies that don't come from those groups that you don't like to hear from, okay? There's a Dartmouth study, there's a study from Germany, there's a whole national register thing that just came out. The book that I ordered, so I could show you. This isn't, you need to put it in, you know, everyone needs to research what it is. Everyone needs to put it in their Google, Google bar. I'm not making this up. I, it goes all the way back to the Manhattan Project, and it's all about big business. And I don't think that our bodies are supposed to be, are supposed to be the disposal sites for this type of a poison. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. Anybody else that has a public comment on a non-agenda item? Casing none, I will close public comments. Unfortunately, we were not able to conclude our business during our closed session before the meeting, so we will turn back into closed session at this point.